Good afternoon. And I will call to order the February 21st meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Magrino, Slack, Suesi, Lukie Kipir, Vreeland, and Rockwell. Our first item in business today is to approve the actions from the February 6th meeting. May I have a motion to approve those actions? We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we will sort through the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We'll determine which items we will discuss, which will be approved on consent, and which will be continued to another meeting. So starting at the top of the agenda, item one is at 4839 Gerard Avenue South. That is a minor subdivision. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item one? See, no one will put that on consent. Item two is at 3416 Chicago Avenue. That is a rezoning for an existing building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item two? See, no one will put item two on consent. Item three is Q Coffee at 1418 East Lake Street. That's a site plan review for a commercial building addition there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item three? See, no one will put that on consent. Item four is the 4700 Cedar Retail Addition and Renovation at 4700 through 4714 Cedar Avenue South. That's a site plan review for a commercial building. We will discuss item four. And just so I have a sense, is anyone here wishing to speak on item four? Yep, so a few of you. We will discuss that item. Item five is the Estes Funeral Chapel at 2201 and 2215 Plymouth Avenue North and 1245 Penn Avenue North. Several applications for a building there. We will continue that item to the March 6th meeting. So if anyone is here for that item, we will consider that on March 6th. And finally, item six is the Ironclad at 811 Washington Avenue South, 243 through 249 Chicago Avenue South, and 800 and a half South Third Street. Several applications for a new mixed-use building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item six? We have one speaker, so we will discuss item six. So our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one, two, and three will be on consent. We will discuss items four and six, and we will continue item five. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. We have no committee of the whole consent agenda today, so next we will move on to our other agenda items. First, may I have a motion to continue item five to the March 6th meeting? We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. And at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. That is items one, two, and three. Is anyone wishing to speak on items one, two, or three? See, no one. I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. We will start with item four, which is the 4700 Cedar Retail Addition, and staff is Ms. Steiner.
Before you tonight is a site plan review application at 4700 to 4714 Cedar Avenue South. Just some background on the location. It's located at East 47th Street and Cedar Avenue in the Field Regina Northrop neighborhood, just north of Minnehaha Creek, just west of Hiawatha Park, and just northwest of Lake Nakoma. The zoning in the area along Cedar Avenue is mostly Zon C2 and then surrounded by residential zoning and residential uses. This application originally was scheduled to be on the December 5th Planning Commission meeting and has been continued several times since then. The original proposal was an approximately 2,300 square foot addition to the existing building on 4700 Cedar. And then based on the staff recommendation that was going to go forward with that December 5th Planning Commission meeting, the applicant chose to have their application continued several times to revise their plans based on that recommendation. There were several conditions of approval that staff had originally recommended. The most significant one was that the addition, we were recommending a condition of approval that the addition be relocated to comply with the building placement provision in site plan review. As I said before, it's been continued several times, and you're seeing the revised plan tonight. So the current proposal is for an approximately 2,300 square foot standalone building. The use is a coffee shop with a drive-through facility. There would be two curb cuts on Cedar Avenue that would allow for the drive-through circulation around the building. And then the existing building would be renovated and would have three different retail spaces within the existing building. The required applications are just, the only required application is site plan review, and that's just required because it is a requirement for any use of the drive-through facility. Just to speak to drive-throughs, these are the specific requirements for drive-throughs. So in the commercial districts, you have to have a lot area of 12,000 square feet and lot width of 100 feet. So it has to be of a sufficient size to allow a drive-through facility. Drive-throughs are prohibited in the C1 and C3A district, but they are permitted in the C2 and the C4 districts. As I said before, this site is located in the C2 zoning district. Drive-throughs are also subject to several specific standards. First of all, the stacking requirements. So this specific drive-through, or this type of drive-through would require four stacking spaces from the pickup window. They are complying with that requirement. They are required not to have a conflict of use specifically for pedestrians and then parking areas within the, for the stacking lanes. And then pedestrian access to the facility can't cross the drive-through facility, the main entrance can't cross the drive-through stacking lanes to get to the use. In the site plan review analysis, the alternative compliance for this updated proposal that was required was building placement, principal entrances, visual interest, and then parking and loading landscaping. So I've just made a visual aid. You've read the report, so this is just to summarize. So the principal entrance issue, the entrance on Cedar, as they've shown on the plans, is wrapped by a fence around the patio, and so there's no direct entry to the, although there is an entrance facing Cedar, there's no direct entrance for the pedestrian from the sidewalk on Cedar. The landscaping plan does show a break in that fence, but none of the other plans showed that. So that was why they needed alternative compliance for the principal entrance. There also weren't sufficient architectural features to delineate it as the principal entrance, the entrance facing Cedar. Visual interest, that's our blank wall standard. I've identified where there are blank walls. There are blank walls on the existing retail building, but they would be exacerbated by a part of the proposal that is to remove some brick bandings that's on the existing building, and so that would create even larger blank walls. And then there's a blank wall on the south, sorry, south is to the left on this, on this plan. On the south side of the proposed new building, there's also a blank wall. The landscape, the parking, the parking that faces the public street needs to be landscaped with a seven-foot landscaped yard and a three-foot screen, as you know. There's only a two-and-a-half-foot wide landscaped buffer between the parking stalls and the sidewalk on Cedar in the proposal. And then the building placement, although about half of the building is placed within eight feet of the property line, there is another half of the building is about 13 feet setback from the property line. So those are all the items that required alternative compliance, and staff has recommended several of conditions of approval related to those requests for alternative compliance. So first of all, we're recommending that you require a direct entrance from the public sidewalk on Cedar. So either no patio fence separating this sidewalk from Cedar, or the sidewalk from the entrance, or a break, or a patio fence would be there, but there would be a break so that there's direct access from the sidewalk on Cedar to that main entrance. We're also, in regards to that principal entrance, we're also recommending a condition of approval that some architectural features be added to demarcate that more obviously as the principal entrance, such as they are proposing a large canopy feature over the entrance that faces the parking lot, and we're recommending that that canopy feature be on the entrance on Cedar as well. And then we're also recommending that the blank wall on the new building not be allowed, and they would incorporate 15 feet of brick, which would make only a 25-foot blank wall, which is our maximum allowed through site plan review. Those brick bands that I recommended or I mentioned, we're recommending be retained to mitigate the blank walls on the existing building. There's a crosswalk between, I can go back to the site plan, there's a crosswalk between the existing retail building and the new coffee shop building, and we are recommending, the applicant indicated that this would be an elevated walkway. The plans, just to clarify, we've added a condition of approval that it would be elevated and striped to allow for a safer crosswalk there. We are also requiring, or recommending a condition of approval that that landscape buffer be increased in width. The drive aisle is larger than the minimum required, and so if they increased it by two feet, they would still meet the minimum drive aisles for that parking lot, but they would allow for probably more successful landscaping to grow there. So we're recommending that. And then also that four ornamental trees would be provided in that landscaped yard, and that was in response to that alternative compliance for the parking and loading landscaping and screening. And then just a condition of approval that the eventual lighting plan would meet all of our photometric standards and things like that. So that's just a summary of the report, and I can take any questions.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Slack.
Yeah, I have one question. It's more for clarification. I think one of the first things that I noticed was the two existing driveways as part of the original, or the existing site, and then from the original application in December now, has gone back to two driveways in this concept, narrower driveways, but driveways nonetheless. And then going through the PDR report, saw that Public Works really identified the need to reduce or remove one of the driveways. And so how did, how was that responded to in this application?
Sure. So the PDR report is from June, so that was from the original, that was only in response to the original proposal for the addition. PDR, or the Public Works Department has reviewed informally this proposal and believes that this provides, they were mostly concerned about sufficient stacking space for the drive-through, and so they feel comfortable that the two curb cuts would be acceptable, and they would provide enough stacking space for the drive-through. There's, as I said before, the drive-throughs are required to have four stacking spaces behind the pickup window. The site plan shows they have at least nine, and then they have the opportunity, if there needs to be additional stacking, that in this configuration, there would be opportunity for additional stacking in the parking area. So although Public Works originally had wanted a reduction in the number of curb cuts, they are accepting this proposal.
All right. Commissioner Vreeland or Rockwell, do you have a question down there? Commissioner Crown.
Yes. Lisa, can you maybe zoom out from the site a little bit and talk more about curb cuts that are across the street, other traffic patterns that we're aware of? A lot of the commentary from concerned neighbors is about traffic and car movements in and out of, on and off of Cedar Avenue.
Sure. Unfortunately, this aerial doesn't quite get to, there's a Caribou Coffee that's south of this proposal, just right out of the picture here, that does have issues with the stacking going into the public street that a number of people have commented on. There's also curb cuts directly to the east of this site for the two buildings that are along Cedar on the east side, and then there's two curb cuts serving the property directly to the south, which is the Italian eatery building. Does that answer your question?
There's a fairly large retail activity going on directly across the street, and it looks like none of the two curb cuts that are proposed on Cedar for this project align with the curb cut across the street. So it looks to me like you're going to have left turn, people turning left into each other as they try to go to different establishments on the different sides of the street. I'm worried if that's been evaluated by staff.
That would be something that has been evaluated by the Public Works Department. So they are accepting of this location of curb cuts. They do have to finalize the PDR development review process, so although they're informally accepting this proposal, the location of the curb cuts, it could change, I suppose, but they preliminarily accepted this.
Okay. Are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, at this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item, and I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to speak first, if someone is here, to speak on behalf of the applicant, and see if there's anything they'd like to add to the staff presentation. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jeff Rady, and I'm from Momentum Design Group. I'm the architect for Mr. Sullivan. And I just wanted to ask one question or one change to the conditions. If you can see the point, how do I get this to work here? Oh, do I put it over here?
Yeah, there's an overhead right there.
Okay.
Okay, so we can zoom out a little bit.
Or I'll zoom in here, right? Here we go. So the condition is to have a four-foot-six green space over here, and I was out at the site today, and I measured from the back of the sidewalk to the front of the curb, and that number is 62 foot-six by my rough estimate. And so when you add up the 18-foot parking stall, 22-foot drive aisle, 18-foot parking stall, that the delta is four foot-six. However, I would like to change the condition to say approximately four foot-six, because I'm not a surveyor, and I don't know if I can get exactly four foot-six. I can probably get four foot. We'll get you as much as we can. I cannot reduce the size of the sidewalk, because right now the sidewalk is six foot-five, and that is very, very small in comparison to what a normal sidewalk in front of retail is. So is that, is that something to consider?
We can certainly consider that.
Okay, just to say approximately four foot-six.
Okay. Yeah. And Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Slack.
Yeah, well, can you restate your math? Because a 60-foot parking bay, double bay with drive lane in the middle is sufficient enough, and if you're showing 62 six...
62 six. So 18 plus 18 plus 22 is, yields out four foot-six. 18 plus 18 plus 22 plus four foot-six is 62 foot-six.
Yeah.
I said it several times.
That is measuring back of curb to back of curb?
No, that's from the back of, from the edge of the sidewalk, so the curb of the sidewalk to the face of the sidewalk in the right of way.
Okay. So you're parking, this is not measuring the actual parking, the bays and the, like, because that can be, 60 foot is pretty standard. You're actually less than that in this proposal.
I'm 18 plus 22 plus 18.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I just would like it to say approximately four foot-six, because I don't know if I can get four foot-six.
The way I heard the description was that this was the width of the parking at 62 six, which we could obviously go smaller than that.
Correct, yeah.
But, okay.
Okay.
All right. If there are no other questions for the applicant, we can move on to some other speakers. And I know several of you are here for this item. So whoever would like to go first, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good morning. Oh, it's not morning. Good afternoon, Commissioner. I'm Aaron Taylor. I'm a homeowner less than 350 feet from this establishment. I have three young kids, 13, three, and one, and we frequent at all of the restaurant establishments in the neighborhood. We were attracted to the neighborhood because of the small-town feeling and the diversity, but also the close proximities to a lot of bike trails and the lakes, and also close proximity to Minnehaha Falls. I was pretty bummed when President Obama came down our block, and I wasn't there. I was on my honeymoon, but it's not every day you get to have a president come down and visit an establishment on your block. So it's a good bragging point, but the point I'm trying to make here is that you have over 11 retail businesses in less than a block radius, and there's no mention of any traffic, any addressing of the traffic at all. So within there, you probably already have all of the emails as well from the concerns. I've reread the emails, and every single one of those concerns was addressed at the traffic congestion. I frequent to the Caribou a lot, and I cannot drive to the Caribou, and every Sunday I want to get a Caribou Coffee, but on my way to church, I cannot, because if you get two cars in the drive-through going north, it's done. It's backing up the traffic going north. And so even trying to come north from the Target on 66th Street and try to turn into the gas, or try to turn into the Cold Stone Creamery to get some ice cream, you can't because it's so congested. So from there, you get, you're going to have, not only, you're going to lose that small-town neighborhood feeling, but also you're going to push out the small guy as well. So popcorn shop, that's right there. I've heard nothing but tearing down and rebuilding. So you have to think about the traffic, you have to think about the noise, and you also have to think about the kids that will be going through and frequently walking up and down that street. So to have this go up is a shock, but I'm glad to see that sketchy gas station going. There was a lot of sketchy activity going on there. I've never seen a gas station that advertised for gas, but you never see a person at the pump paying for gas. So it's very sketchy to myself. But back to the, to what I'm here to talk about is that it has to be some type of address to look at the traffic flow through there. I live on a block, and it's hard for me to get in and to get out of my driveway, to even get my kids to daycare, to even get my kids from daycare, to even get to church, to even get to Target, to get to some of the establishments that I like to go to. It's hard during rush hour traffic, and this is going to add to that, to that congestion. So it, the developers here, he didn't mention anything about traffic flow. I don't think that's their concern. Their biggest concern is capitalization, and right now, that capitalization is going on the backs of our traffic congestion that's going to happen right now. So I'm very opposed to it. Like I said before, we have over 11, that with the addition of this coffee shop and three additional retail stores, there's going to be over 11 retail establishments in that square mile, a square block, and it's way too much. And you have a school right behind it, and you have a golf course right over along trouble as well. So where are we going to go? Where are we going to park? I can't even have an outside barbecue, because there's no parking on East 47th or on Cedar Avenue. So this is just going to add to it. There's no solutions, it's just only suggestions that's going on right now. So we haven't talked about the families that live behind there on 18th Street. We haven't talked about that. It's no parking there. We have the triathlon that goes on at Lake Nakoma's every year, a pond hockey tournament. All of this attraction that's going on right there, but it's no talk of permits for only the residents in that neighborhood, or speed bumps to slow down the traffic. So this needs to be taken into consideration as opposed to just looking at having a new establishment here at that empty retail space. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And who would like to speak next? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Pam Katterlick. I live at 4525 18th Avenue South. I've lived in the city for probably 30 years. I've lived in the area I'm at for 17 years. My wife has lived there for 20 years. We love the city. We love our neighborhood. It's a great area to live in. I do have some concerns about the development. I would love to see the area developed. There's nothing better than having vibrant, a vibrant community and options for people so that they don't have to go far from where they live. However, I am opposed to putting a Starbucks in on this site. Of course, the greatest concern, excuse me, and what you've seen from the feedback from other people in the neighborhood, is the congestion in the area partly due to the Caribou that's there. The gentleman that spoke just before me, he also said that it doesn't sound like there is any, anything happening to relieve that congestion or to do something to help if there's a Starbucks put in. I don't really think we need another coffee shop right across the street from Caribou. We also have a family-owned coffee shop about four blocks away, Sister Sludge, that has been there for 20 years and is a thriving community business and a great hangout for neighbors to get together. I'm also a little disappointed that, and maybe I missed something, but I would have liked to have seen the neighborhood be able to comment and give ideas on what would go into that space and have the community support it. Again, the letters that I've seen, there aren't any, I believe there aren't any letters that support putting in a Starbucks across the street. I think if you asked the majority of people in the neighborhood, what would you like to see in there, I don't think anyone would say a Starbucks coffee shop. We have a Caribou right across the street. We have Super America right across the street. They also have coffee. And we have a Melo Glaze about a half-mile away. I believe they also have coffee there, too. I think developing the land should be about what the neighborhood wants and what the neighborhood would like to see, and I think it would be great to have them participate in those discussions. It looks like that hasn't happened, but I'm here to voice my concerns anyway. The other part is, you know, it's about the people, it's about the neighborhood, it's about safety, and putting a Starbucks in there is going to compromise safety for every person that drives through there. Every car, 20, 30,000-some a day, every person, every biker, every walker, every jogger in every car, is their, their safety is at stake. My other, the other thing that I wanted to ask, and I don't know if I can get an answer to a question, but I'd like to ask it just to put it out there, and maybe you could tell me who could answer it or direct me. I would really like to know where, what's, how Starbucks plays into this, and is the city getting money from Starbucks? Is the developer getting the money from Starbucks? Is the owner of the land getting money from Starbucks to put a Starbucks in there? That's the question that I have. I'd be interested to know the answer to that. I don't know if they are or not, but I'd be interested in it. With that, I would just like to say that I urge and implore you to not approve this project. It is not the best option for the people of the neighborhood, the taxpayers, your constituents. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak.
Thank you. And I might ask Mr. Wittenberg to respond to your question.
Sure. Commissioners, the coffee shop is an allowed use in the C2 zoning district. That's a private development proposal. The city isn't receiving any kind of financial reward for the development, other than obviously any kind of increase in property taxes that you would see from improvement of the property.
But you wouldn't know if the owner of the property would, would be getting something from Starbucks, because it's private?
Well, presumably, there's a lease arrangement with the property owner that they're paying to lease property, or I don't know if they will own the building, or if the property owner will own the building and they lease the property. Presumably, there's financial benefit to the owner from coming from Starbucks.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. And next speaker, please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Matt Steele, 4412 18th Avenue South in Minneapolis, and I'm also Vice President of Field Regina Northrop Neighborhood Group. First, I'm just curious if you received the resolution that we passed at our meeting late last week? Since it sounds like you did, I won't go into the details, other than to say, in general, we are very supportive of the conditions of approval that open up the front of the new structure to the street, as you could see. Also, we thanked the community and the developers for having a good meeting last week. We had a few dozen... Uh, we had a few dozen neighborhood members there and it was a very civil meeting that focused on issues. It was really encouraging just to see that kind of dialogue, so we just wanna thank everybody involved. I think that the neighborhood, so just taking off my, my hat and speaking as a neighbor of this that lives a couple blocks away, I like to walk down to the grocery store across the street or the restaurants on that block, oftentimes the stroller with my baby, et cetera. You know, I think that we've all experienced, people that live in the neighborhood, the traffic chaos on that block. Uh, and I think some of the concern is just that, you know, this has the potential to increase that. And, you know, we wanna just make sure that that's addressed. I don't know if Public Works really got into that as much as, as neighbors would have liked. I know we contacted, or the neighborhood group had submitted a res, a resolution asking for a traffic study back when this came up late last year, and we don't know if that would, or that just wasn't possible or something, but I think there needs to be more of a cohesive look at how these different curb cuts and parking uses that generate car trips interact with each other. Um, and to that point, I just wanted to compare and contrast this with, you know, one of the reasons why we love our neighborhood is because it's kind of the sweet spot between 48th and Chicago, this wonderful urban walkable node, and it's highly valuable and has a lot of establishments. And Nakomas, Hayawatha Regional Park, this corner, or the corner of Cedar and Minnehaha is kind of the nexus of the creek, um, Lake Nakomas, Lake Hayawatha, the golf course, all these other public amenities that we have. And I think, you know, my sentiment is just that, you know, we came into this understanding what the developer wants and that's fine, and, you know, uh, what the city is here to do and administering the, uh, the policies and the codes that we have. It's just, it just seems like a missed opportunity for something that could have been more. And you look at 48th and Chicago, there's a, you know, significantly more uses squeezed into that space, but it doesn't feel troubling in the same way that, that Cedar does. And there's two interrelated kind of things that go along with that that I, I hope can be addressed, not necessarily by my staff or the planning commission, but really at a policy level. So I know I'm not really addressing the right, right, uh, audience here, but it's kind of broken if this is, you know, what we're allowed to do. Because street design is a major issue. Uh, Cedar Avenue here, people go 45 miles an hour. Um, and that's getting around people that are waiting in the middle of the street to turn left into a drive-through that already exists, and then also land use policy that just doesn't encourage that denser kind of, you know, something that would give more amenities in the space instead of fewer amenities. Cedar Avenue feels like it's a, an extension of the freeway to the south Minneapolis. In some senses, it is, but I really wish that we didn't have to, uh, see that as our future. Maybe that's Cedar Avenue of the past, but I'm hoping we continue that in the future. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Eric Carrera. I'm the owner of Italian Eatery. I also own the land south. Uh, we bought it back in 2015 and redeveloped it and when then Carboni's bought the building across the street and they also redeveloped at the same time. When Corkdork moved over there as well, those buildings were vacant at those times. They were vacant, I believe, for a couple of years. Uh, so we've seen a huge increase in density of traffic since both myself and Dan at Carboni's and Corkdork have moved in there. I don't think it's been an appropriate amount of time to evaluate the traffic that's been going on there. Uh, I, from operating the restaurant, I do also operate the restaurant myself, uh, with my family. And on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, we're having people coming in, uh, saying they just got in a wreck over there by the Carboni's and, uh, the Caribou Drive-Thru. Uh, my wife grew up in the neighborhood for about 15 years and that was the intersection that her dad said not to go to. Uh, it was the dangerous intersection. It was the one that had the most problems, they weren't allowed to ride the bike to. And since us moving in there, we've done, uh, anything in our power to help make it more of a pedestrian area. We installed bike racks on our own that were paid for by us. We installed a bun, a bench on our own. We actually installed video cameras last week to help see any accidents that would help, uh, mediate the situation there. Uh, our biggest thing is that we just wanna see something that would keep people in the neighborhood rather than leaving, and I think the drive-through is just helping people leave. Uh, we took a big risk on this neighborhood and we knew that it would pay off just because my wife had the instinct of a wife, and I listened to her, she was right. Uh, but the biggest thing is we just wanna keep it a neighborhood area and a neighborhood spot, and we wanna see it flourish in that, that way. Uh, so we just ask that we take a strong look at the safety of the public when they're walking around there, because ever since we moved in and Dan opened across the street, there's been an extreme amount of increase in pedestrian traffic. And I know from listening to my clients and my customers come in that they're concerned about another drive-through saying that, or stopping that. They're concerned about walking down to my restaurant. We get, I would say, 20 to 30% of our business is pedestrian, walking down from their houses, and they're saying, uh, we don't know if we'll be able to bring our kids and walk down that street anymore. So that's a big concern to me. I, I commend them on, uh, reaching out to develop that property. We would have done the same thing, we were actually interested in it. Uh, yeah, I definitely think it's a good opportunity for the neighborhood in any way. I just wanna take a stronger look at the drive-through and make sure it's safe for everyone. I do know that, uh, that intersection is either the fourth or fifth, maybe even the third busiest intersection in the state. Uh, the other, one of the other busier intersections is Selby and Snelling, which I actually live in that neighborhood, uh, just right across the river where they just put in a drive-through Starbucks there. Uh, what they asked them to do was change their curb cuts to go along Marshall, uh, instead of go along Snelling. Uh, since they did that, it does make it difficult, more difficult to the customers to get in there, but it, the traffic on Snelling now is much, much reduced. I think anything that we can do there, I know there was proposals about moving the curb cut, uh, reducing it and then moving it on the entrance of 46th. I think that would help eliminate a lot. But, uh, whatever, I just hope we just consider the safety of our pedestrians in our neighborhood down there and just keep pushing forward that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And, uh, Commissioners, we, uh, just have the one application for us, site plan review. Staff has recommended 10 conditions. Are there any further questions of staff or would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Commissioner Kronzer.
A clarifying question for staff. Was there any traffic study or TDMP completed for this project?
There is not. Um, the requirement in the zoning code for a travel demand management plan would be 100,000 square feet of non-resi, new non-residential space. Um, I, Public Works has a similar requirement, um, and Public Works did not require the traffic study. They felt that with the new proposal, providing the adequate amount of stacking spaces, that they were comfortable that the street had the capacity for this use.
All right. Are there any further questions? Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I do have a question for staff. Sorry, just left. I spoke with the 11th Board Council Office and understood that there was a public meeting in February where folks were talking about the garbage dumpsters as well as how the drive-through speakers would be oriented. Do you have those comments and details?
Sure. Um, so one of the public comments that was received did talk about, um, they, the proposal includes two different, uh, trash enclosures. So there's one, one up here and then another one over here. That was a concern, um, or they were encouraging the applicant to have just one trash enclosure for the overall site. Um, and then the, uh, there was also a concern that the ordering windows would, or the ordering microphones would face towards the residential uses. Um, so that was a concern as well that was brought up.
Would it be possible to add conditions that would reflect, do you know if the project team was aware of those comments or wanted to comment about adding a condition that would co-locate garbage dumpsters away from 47th Street and then a condition that would ensure that the noise from speakers doesn't face residential areas?
Um, my understanding was that that, uh, was discussed at the neighborhood meeting, I wasn't there, but, um, so I think they are aware of those comments. We had encouraged in the staff report that they would, we'd encourage them to co-locate the trash enclosures, um, but we didn't talk about the microphones or the ordering microphones. But that's certainly something that could be added as a condition.
Yeah, ma, maybe we could have the applicant, uh, address that and see about the feasibility of, of both of those things.
Okay, the current speaker box is located right in this general area right here. I've circled it. Uh, the person at the meeting asked if we could point it fur, due north, which would be appro, approximately in this area right here. Uh, we as the applicant do not have a problem doing that. We do need to work with Starbucks because what that'll do is that will move the stacking back further and into the site more. So we'd appreciate it if we could review that with, uh, with, with the coffee shop to see if that's something that they're amenable to. Uh, and we can work with staff on that. We don't have a problem moving it over here, but, uh, that will elongate the, the, the stacking, uh, further into the site. As far as the trash is concerned, that is an existing trash location right up here. Um, and we have a, a new trash location located right down here. This is for the coffee shop and this is for the retail building. And we'd like to keep both of those as we have, as we have them drawn right now. This is a condi, an existing condition, um, and it, and it's serviced by the, the alley. So.
All right, thank you. And are there any further questions? Would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Bender, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Kronzer.
I'll start this out. I'd like to add at least one condition, um, possibly, possibly two, but, um, I'd like to move staff recommendations for the site plan review and add a condition number 11, which is, and I wanna speak to this once I finish this. The project shall be limited to one curb cut onto Cedar Avenue, limited to 12-foot, 2 inches as designed in the site plan, and limited to one-way exit only.
All right, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, Commissioner Kronzer.
Yeah, um, you know, these are our commercial notes. This commercial note has been pretty devastated from its traditional form. We think about, you know, turn of the last century, buildings up to the corner, walkable, parking in the back, um, safe sidewalks, li, limited curb cuts off the major avenue. And having a five-year-old son walking on busy streets, the major impediment to safety is curb cuts off of a busy street, especially when there's on-street parking and there's high traffic speeds. Anything that we can do as a city to, uh, keep traffic movements where they should be to traffic intersections, 46th and Cedar, uh, to existing curb cuts, the curb cut off of, uh, 46th into this existing site and the parking lot that's not being, uh, modified too much. Um, I don't think this really affects the operation of the drive-through, um, as much as I wish it were, but, um, the drive-through's allowed, we can't do anything about that, but we can kind of protect our pedestrian district and our pedestrian zone. I think this is a, a fair compromise to, um, you know, allow the uses that are allowed and still, um, do the best we can given what we're, what we have to work with.
Mr. Wittenberg.
Commissioners, if I could just clarify, um, so that we aren't in a situation where we're disagreeing about the intent of your condition. The, I, I think you meant, um, that your intent is that in addition to the curb cut along 47th, that they are limited to one curb cut along Cedar Avenue, not that they're on the, on the site limited to just one curb cut in totality.
Correct, limited, uh, limited to one on Cedar, that, as it's designed, that the 20, 12-foot, 2 inches. Good clarification.
And, um, Mr. President, if I could just suggest that we allow the applicant an opportunity to speak to that, um, so that we're not insuring an appeal, uh, if we can get their feedback about that?
Yep, we, we can do that. Is, is there anyone else who would like to speak at the moment? Commissioner Rockwell.
Sorry, just clarification again, Commissioner Kronzer. So the intent is to have the, uh, well, now, uh, the northernmost curb cut on Cedar going into the site, but then the, the exit from the drive-through would be redirected?
I believe that is correct.
No, the opposite. So the, the into the site would be off of 46.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Two-way, and then the out would be on Cedar.
So you're intending to eliminate one curb cut, not redirect one curb cut?
Okay, I'd, I'd like to ask the applicant, uh, to respond to that addition of, of a condition.
Uh, thank you very much. My name is Mark Fearoff. Uh, I, I'm an attorney and I represent the applicant. Um, this is, uh, of course, uh, new to us. We've, um, it's been a long process. I know you've known, you know that this has been continued on a number of occasions. We've had multiple meetings with staff, input from Public Works. Uh, and it's a complicated project because we've got a tenant, uh, that has to approve everything that we agree to. Uh, because this is coming up at the 11th hour, we haven't had an opportunity, um, to discuss this particular proposal with our tenant, uh, and of course, uh, for that reason can't, can't consent to it. But just from a practical standpoint, um, if I could point something out.
Hold on to their tenant.
We've heard a lot, uh, a lot of, um, feedback and, and sentiment regarding traffic maneuvers and so forth. Uh, if you in fact eliminate, um, the ability to turn in off of Cedar and you have an exit only there, you're gonna have southbound traffic traveling down Cedar, uh, and they will realize that there's a Starbucks there and a place to get a coffee after it's too late for them to turn into 46th and actually enter the site. So you will either have the, uh, would-be Starbucks customer doing a U-turn somewhere to get back, to come back and enter the site through 46th, or if they're not so brand loyal, they'll go to Caribou. Then you've got increased, uh, customers taking a left into the Caribou and into a coffee shop that has significantly less stacking than this site has. The site, the site is set up for a stacking of 10 cars, which is two and a half times the minimum requirement. There's ample space to, uh, stack a lot of cars there and we need for them to be able to enter safely in the way to do that. Uh, from our perspective is, uh, through this proposed and, and diagrammed entrance off of Cedar. It's not to say my client is absolutely opposed to it, but as I expressed to you, it's not something that we can agree here through today because of obligations to our prospective tenant. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the site plan review with, uh, one condition, uh, related to limiting the number of curb cuts on Cedar Avenue. Uh, are there any other amendments to that motion or any further discussion? Any further discussion? Uh, if there is no further discussion, uh, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland?
Aye.
Squeezie?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Zipke Pierre?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gunder?
Aye.
8-0.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item four. Our next item for discussion is item six, the Ironclad. And since, I believe we only have one speaker for that item, maybe you could come to the microphone and, and if, if you had a question or a minor issue, maybe you could ask that so we don't ask staff to give a, a full formal presentation on the whole project. And maybe we have a couple speakers.
No, first of all, um, my name is Randy Manthe. I live at 103rd Avenue South. I'm here representing the Downtown Minneapolis Neighborhood Association Land Use Committee, and I would like to express my thanks to the commission and to the applicant and the team for, uh, hanging around. This could have been cleaned up very simply through consent, but I'd just like to discuss one item. There's no need to do a full formal presentation of the project. I'd like to just address a couple of really quick items. First of all, uh, this is a great project. We had an opportunity to review this project at the DMM, DMNA Land Use Meeting on May the 3rd, so the applicant came in with their team, did a full presentation of the project. We had a very good discussion. We identified four particular items that we asked the developer to look at as they proceeded to further refine the project. Those items were the blank south wall on the parking garage, which has been addressed and is a part of the staff report. The second item is the width of the curb cut off of Chicago Avenue that also was addressed and, uh, re- That also was addressed and resolved to the satisfaction of the DMNA. The next item is the developer should maximize every opportunity to integrate trees and other greenery into the public realm. If you look at the planting plan and the design of this project, they've gone above and beyond to create a public edge as well as a very unique back. Are we calling it an alley, or have you come up with a new name for it? Walkway through which the neighborhood can navigate to and from Mill District over to the stadium. So again, offering up a little delightful opportunity as far as integrating into the strange geometries and elevations, great elevations on this property. The one item I would like to address in particular, and I've talked to the applicant about this, and I've sent a note into the city today, it's something I'd like to address on a broader level but apply to the specific project, and that is the issue of dog relief on facilities. With all the issues in the world, you may think of dog relief as a rather trite discussion item, but when you think about the number of units that are now being built in the downtown area, you have the Legacy with 300-plus units, you have 205 Park with 127 units, Ironclad with 171 units, you have East Town, you have some other projects coming forward. And generally, and I'll be somewhat conservative in my numbers here, usually get about 25%, 30% of the units are occupied with owners who have dogs. So, you know, we're dumping 200, 300 dogs out onto the streets with all this new development in the downtown area. And what we're asking right now, I know the city has nothing on their books, nothing in your zoning regulations that addresses this item. This is an item that's real. Other cities are challenged by this. Going forward, I would very much appreciate it if this board, commission, could look at that, if the planning staff could look at that as an opportunity. And so when a development is built, that facility is integrated into the new development. A beautiful example, a well-done example, is the addition. They have a little outdoor dog area as well as an indoor facility. It becomes a tremendous marketing opportunity for the project. It brings value to the community in that the dogs, many times their needs are addressed, you know, on the facility without having to take them across the street, and inevitably they end up relieving themselves on other people's property who are trying to maintain their grass and shrubs and such. The DMNA truly supports dogs. We value dogs in the downtown area. They bring tremendous value to the owners. They are a way to promote sense of community, and also they put eyes on the street when people are walking their dogs. So it's a very positive thing. It's just this one thing needs to get addressed, and the only way this can be addressed is in the physical development of projects on properties. This isn't something you can many times go and do as an after-the-fact item. So what I would like to do is just ask the applicant, and I've discussed this with them in advance, if they could just please explain how they're handling it on this project. And as a way to ensure that this gets done and it gets done well, that the commission condition the project on providing an onsite relief facility that is designed specifically for this purpose and not taking the end of a flowerbed and calling it a dog relief area. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know we have at least one other speaker, but why don't we have the staff presentation right now?
All right, I just have a really brief presentation. The applications before you tonight for this proposal include a conditional use permit, variance, and site plan review. The location of the property is at Washington and Chicago, includes several different parcels. The parcel or the property has a unique shape because of the former location of the railroad. I have some historic photos to show because we're including a condition of approval related to the retaining wall. So I have some historic photos where you can see the viaducts that used to cross at Washington and Chicago. The arrows note where the property is. Sorry, that one is turned the wrong way. Here's probably the best photo. You can see the retaining wall that's still on site, or portion of it is still on site, is right here. Can you see that person? The proposal, as I said, conditional use permit to increase maximum height. There's a residential portion of the building that exceeds the maximum height. It's 14 stories, where the district maximum is 10 stories. There's a hotel portion that faces Chicago Avenue, which is only eight stories, so that complies with the height requirement. It's just that residential portion. Then they have a second phase that's proposed along 9th Avenue, which would add four additional stories on top of the parking garage, which is to the rear of the property. And includes two levels of underground parking and two levels of upgrade parking. There's a variance of the northeast interior side yards. That's just for the residential windows that are located along this section of the building, and they extend out to 4 feet from the property line where 15 feet is required, and then site plan review for the overall site. We are recommending approval with several conditions. We had not addressed the dog relief issue in our staff reports, so it's not a zoning code requirement, so it's not something we would typically evaluate during the site plan review process, and I can take any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing on this item, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak at this time, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Pete Keely with Collage Architects. I'm here representing the Karbanda family. Varun Karbanda is also here tonight, and Graves Hospitality. Jim and Ben Graves are here as well to answer questions if you have them. So we're really pleased with the project and kind of the direction it's going and working with the neighborhood group to kind of provide a kind of a redevelopment for what was a parking lot and try to incorporate some of the historical elements, including the name. Ironclad actually was the name of the old grain elevator that was on the site, and incorporating some of those walls and some of the stone to try to make it, you know, a little piece of history there. We know that the dogs are a big issue, and actually, my numbers would probably be a little higher than the 25% to 30% on dog ownership. So it's a big concern to us because those are future residents and a future market that we do have. So really trying to provide amenities that are akin to the market, of which bikes are a big one, dogs are a big one, and granite and all those types of things as well. So we do have, on the plans that you have, there is a dog run shown on the upper floor, the dog run with the idea that that happens on the third-level patio. So that was originally proposed. There are some concerns about how Phase 2 happens and where dog run happens within that, and also the idea that as dogs are out walking, you're coming in and out of a lower-level floor. They actually may not get to the dog run. We are incorporating a dog spa, washing, foot washing on the lower level at the kind of northeast corner where the walkway is. So we are going to be incorporating kind of a dog relief area of some sort along the walkway. That has yet to be designed. That is something that is going to go in place, but we're also trying to coordinate landscaping and generators or transformers and whatnot. So we've got a lot of moving parts in there, but the intent is to actually put that in that kind of walkway location. And then there's also some discussion about the future. They also own the property to the east of that as well, which is also a parking lot and the redevelopment of 9th Avenue. So that within that, we're looking at maybe kind of a phased approach to kind of figure out where the dog relief is, but it's certainly a big concern of us and will be provided in the project.
All right.
And with that, I think I would just open up to any questions.
And commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers, and I think we have a couple people who'd like to speak. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Let's see, I did not intend to speak today, so this is something that is very impromptu for me. I thought that the format today was going to be a little different than what I see.
And please state your name and address.
My name is Delma Bartelme. I'm a resident of the Zenith Condominiums and recent to the city of Minneapolis. However, Minneapolis has, Minnesota has been a place that I have come to since a long time ago. Forty-five years of marriage has always meant that every summer, we go to the cabin. I am an urban person at heart and grew up in Chicago, and so my comments are aimed, and my questions are aimed at those of us who love being urban animals and also the Mississippi River. Okay, first of all, I think I'd like to draw your attention to the fact that I wore sneakers today. One of the ways that I get around is by walking. Certainly, you live in the city because you want to get rid of a car. And certainly, Minneapolis has really impressed me with its planning and its ability to have people live here and to be able to get around and lower our carbon footprints. There is public transportation on Washington. There's the train accessibility to shopping areas, and certainly, entertainment is very easily gotten to by foot traffic. It's a wonderful place that I have chosen to live in, and so my comments are a little bit wider than this particular project scope that you're addressing at this moment. Had a chance to chat with Pete, and he has explained to me some of the walkability items that are incorporated into the project along 9th Avenue. My main voice today for all of you, ladies and gentlemen, is that Washington is truly deplorable when it comes to foot traffic. I can't walk side-by-side with my husband currently. There are, it's not wide enough for two people to walk side-by-side in many areas between Chicago, Portland, 9th Avenue, 10th Avenue, because there have been additions of meters marking parking spots. There are dubious areas that are designated for trees that really aren't serving their purpose now, since the trees have died. So it's difficult for a couple with children, for example, to be able to walk with a stroller. It's also difficult to maintain. There are many people who I have seen walking, falling, because it's difficult to clear snow, ice, et cetera, from that area. And I'm referring to, again, between the 10th Avenue and getting closer to the Renaissance Depot area. The reason why I'm speaking to this lack of being able to walk or lowering the walkability index is also because you have some other projects that are scheduled to be erected along this neighborhood of ours. So please consider that in your reviews. I think at this particular meeting, you're taking a look more or less at the particular tree as opposed to the forest. I don't know why, you know, there isn't a, there isn't, perhaps I'm not aware, of a venue where you take a look at the whole project's, more than one project and its effect on the neighborhood. Perhaps this organization, the DMNA, is one of the resources that we have. The second point I would like to mention, I want to draw your attention to, is my voice about the skyline, and it refers to the exception on height, the restriction on, there is, you have a height limitation, and there, I noticed that there's a constant review for bending that rule. Why do you have that if you're going to be continuously asking for hearings, et cetera, that that height limit is not being met in one way or another? Skyline is something that perhaps needs to be considered on a more holistic approach. You have some beautiful features in your skyline. In particular, I'd like to draw your attention to the clock in this building. With the height, you are losing that feature, which in my opinion, and historically speaking, is key to your city. Please consider that also as you review your planning and your approval of the different projects. What is going to be the focus of your skyline? How do you want it hidden? How do you want it to showcase your city, our city, as time goes by and there's a need for finding exceptions and approvals to exceptions on your height? Okay, let's see. Thank you. I think that those are the points that I wanted to make to you.
All right, thank you. And I think we have one other speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I also, my name's Anthony Foster, resident of the Zenith Condominiums, right on 2nd Street, 901 2nd Street. We're well within the 350-feet limit of the proposed ironclad property. I've been a taxpaying resident of the Zenith now since October 2013. We looked at the property for a considerable amount of time before we decided to buy and were assured, although we noticed there was quite a bit of undeveloped lots, parking, et cetera, surrounding a building, that there was a height restriction along the Washington Avenue corridor, which would limit the amount of tall buildings would go in within our sight lines. The city's spent a good bit of time in the redevelopment project of the Washington Avenue. Right away, it's been painfully, one thing we've worked around for the last year and will continue, I think it's going to be a good addition to the east, the downtown east area. However, I think if we start building, allowing a variance for the height, maybe only, in this case, a very small variance, but the next time around, somebody's going to increase that a little more, we'll have the concrete canyon, you know, glass concrete canyon to negotiate every time we go up and down Washington Avenue. I think it'd be a detriment to the overall downtown east scene and for the residents therein. And the next thing you know, somebody might throw up a 51-story Trump Tower a couple blocks away. Otherwise, I welcome the project. It looks like a beautiful plan. I think it'll be an addition, a welcome addition with a retail space. I'd just like to see the restriction on height maintained here and in the future projects that might be developed along the Washington Avenue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and commissioners, we have three applications before us. Are there any further questions of staff, or would someone like to start us off with Anyone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Kronzer.
I will move staff recommendation. Where are we here? Sorry about that. Item A, conditional use permit with the one stated condition.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve item A, the conditional use permit for height. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Rockwell.
I think just because two of our commentators talked about the height, the height, the conditional use permit to increase height is essentially the city's burden to show that there is some significant harm to deny it. So I think that both of your comments were heard, and, but we don't have actually a lot of power to keep height down. I do think if, for one of our speakers, curious about the process for the holistic thinking, there are discussions right now around the comprehensive plan, which is the tenure planning document. So, and that will be continuing in the next year. So that's a way to get involved in that, that thinking.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lipke Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Squeezie?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
80.
All right, and that motion carries. Next, we have items B and C. Commissioners, Commissioner Kronzer.
Sure, I'll move B and C together. Motion to approve staff recommendation to approve the variance from the 15-feet to 4-feet for the windows yard setback, and also see site plan review with the six stated conditions.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve items B and C. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Magrino.
I'll just say about the pet issue. I live in Loring Park, so also pretty much downtown, and kitty corner from my apartment building is Emerson School, and they've got a decent amount of grass kind of right there on Spruce and 15th, and they have had so much dog poop in the, on the grounds of the school that the kids at the school have put up like tens of signs. They're all hand-drawn with like crying emoji poops begging people to not let their dogs poop on the grass. So, I would agree that it is kind of an issue because a lot of people do have dogs downtown, and I think we maybe give points in a planned unit development for a pet relief area, but it's not something that's currently part of our zoning review, so that is maybe something that we could look at as we are updating our zoning code with the comprehensive plan because it is a concern, but it sounds like they did have some facilities in the building for pets. So, just wanted to throw out that general comment.
Thank you. And Commissioner Vreeland.
Suggest a poop dedication fee.
Poop dedication fee. That could work.
All right, and if there is no further discussion, we have a motion and a second to approve items B and C. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland.
Aye.
Sweetsie.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Lipkeep here.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Eight Zero.
All right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item six. I should also mention that today is Lisa Steiner's last meeting with us, so we are sad to lose her and wish her well back in Denver. So, thank you for your few years with us.
If I could just add to that, you know, we have high expectations of our city planners, and Lisa has definitely exceeded all of those expectations. She is just such a great colleague and is extremely resourceful and thoughtful and gives great presentations to the City Planning Commission and Zoning and Planning Committee, so we wish her well but are going to miss her dearly.
All right, and that concludes our agenda for today. We have committee of the whole on Thursday, otherwise our meeting is adjourned.